Twenty, we will call. Tyler.
Deah.
Jeff?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Deb?
Here.
And Andrew?
Aye.
All present. We will go move to swearing in the new directors. So we have Jeff, Andrew, and Tyler for board member oath of office. Tyler, if you want to follow along, or I did put it in the drop box, but the oath of office is up there. Board member, for the newly elected board members, do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And will you faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge all the duties of the office as board member in the Gilbert Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
I will.
Okay. You're officially sworn in, Tyler.
Thank you.
Is that a tip? Oh, I was like, is that a tip? So that's the legal requirement of him calling in. So if we get disconnected, you're good, Tyler.
So far, so good, thanks.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is election of board president.
I would nominate Deb Ordall for president.
Second.
Okay. We have nomination for Deb Ordall as board president by John, and a second by Tyler.
What would you say? A approval, or?
I. Okay, Tyler?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Deb?
Me?
Andrew?
Aye.
Okay. It passes. So Deb, you can officially take back over.
Okay. So this, okay now. So it looks like the next step is the election of a vice president.
I nominate Andrew Rinkl.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I didn't say either, sorry. Aye. Okay. Next up is to appoint the board secretary treasurer. Gail?
Nominate Gail.
I don't know what somebody else wants to pick out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good.
Okay, okay, we have so good. Check, check, check. We have the swearing in again. Okay, so board president and vice president, this is the oath of office. Do you, so we have Andrew and Deb. Deb is board president, Andrew is vice president. Do you solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa? And will you faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge all the duties of the office of board president, Deb, and the vice president, Andrew, in Gilbert Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
I will, I do.
Okay.
I didn't think I'd ever say that with Andrew.
It's done.
Okay. Next up, we need to select a meeting site, date, time, and location for our meeting. So what we have here is, what we have done in the past, I think, has been this room, right here, for the location, on the second Monday of each month at 6:00 P.M.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So that passes. Will we be keeping the same schedule, same location? Because I thought, I wasn't sure if we were doing it like Lindsay's house or something. Nice thing we have on this agenda, ooh, oh shoot, one second, sorry. We need to, or there's an item here to name the Ames Tribune as the official publication. So I assume this is where we will print notices and things like that that are required.
All our legal requirements.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. The next item, ten, eight, designate Allers &amp; Cooney Law Firm as legal counsel.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's good that you did that because the rep is here and is going to talk to us later. We should have had just a nay just to say.
The next item that we have on here, and I understand that this likely could change over the year, right?
Yeah.
But to kick us off, we need to have some board member committee assignments. It looks like there are three committees primarily that we're looking at, finance, slash negotiations, facilities, and then the policies committee.
And the reason why I put these in, these groups do meet. If there's any more, I mean, feel free to add more. But you know, our policies, we do our board policies. And then the facilities, you know, Tyler's been having involved with the facilities and anything to do with the facilities. And the finance and negotiations kind of go hand in hand, and I know John and you have been doing that. So starting off with the new members, if, you know, there's, we kind of want to name those people so we can, yeah.
I have a preference to, I am on the negotiations, finance committee with John, and I would prefer, I would like to stay there.
Okay. You're the president, you can appoint.
Hey. Hey. And I think John as well, would you be agreeable to stay on that?
Sure.
As far as the facilities, Tyler, are you agreeable to stay on the facilities committee, Tyler?
Yeah, I very much appreciate that. And I think we can have conversations as we go forward with this new board on potentially expanding that. So yeah, I'll be happy to serve on that. And I'll be anxious to see how we can expand our committees too.
Yep, agreed, agreed. Okay. The last one that we have is the policies one, as they mentioned. And this is one that meets, how many times a year would you say?
It varies when IASB comes out with updates or when we have to review our policies to make sure we're in compliance. So we do have some that we will be meeting with shortly. So whoever signs on the deadline, they will be meeting with. It's not, you've been.
How many, I've been on it.
You've been on it before, it's pretty painless. We just go through what IASB has, what we have, to make sure that we're in compliance.
And is there a requirement of how many people? This is, so this committee, I think, makes recommendations.
No more than two. Yeah, we don't want to put out, so no more than two.
But this is, they make recommendations to the policies, right? To be approved by the board. So it is a great way to get to learn the policies and things like that.
I can be on this.
Andrew?
Yep.
And Jeff, are you interested or not?
I could serve on the facilities one with Tyler.
Okay. And I can, I'd be happy to be on the policies one as well.
Okay.
Okay, so if I run this down, finance, negotiations would be John and myself. Facilities would be Tyler and?
Jeff.
Oh, I was writing it, I'm sorry. Kim's, Kim's husband. And policies would be myself and Andrew. And to your point, Tyler, yeah, as that we're investigating and hoping to maybe look at a committee structure as changes go, we'll talk about those. Okay? Awesome. Is that, do we have to do anything like in terms of an?
You can appoint those in.
You have that power.
I'm done. All right, so it looks like we're at the point of our meeting where we have public forum. We don't see anybody here that would like to speak for that. So I think we can move on from, to the next item, which is oral reports. So our first one, we have Danielle from Allers &amp; Cooney. Is that correct? Did I say that right? And you were going to provide, I think, a legal update to some of our existing members as well as the new ones.
Do you want me to just?
You're good.
Do it from here?
Right?
Well, and how long did you say? I'll do whatever you want.
Two to three hours, wasn't it?
I think like maybe I didn't talk that long.
Whatever you have to do to cover it. You know, we talked about the role of the board and things like that.
Yeah.
We have some new board members on here. We have some veteran board members on here, but things are changing.
Yeah, I think we're looking for maybe like a 10-minute.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so here's the deal. The things that we typically like to cover for those of you that are new is you're subject to the open meetings and public records law, which it's always important, even for veteran board members, to kind of refresh about what that exactly means. The most important things, I think, for you all is just knowing that your agenda, you all know, and Gail does a great job, posting it 24 hours in advance. And the agenda items are supposed to, the standard is to reasonably apprise the public of what you'll be acting upon. So your agenda items don't need to be, you know, super long, but they just have to reasonably apprise the public. So just know that in mind when you have something, you know, Gail puts it on there. That's the purpose of the agenda. Open sessions, closed sessions, and exempt session. I just want to briefly touch on that because there's always confusion between what an exempt session is and what a closed session is. Under the law, there's express ways you can go into closed session. And some of those would include a student expulsion hearing to meet with legal counsel for strategy in matters that are pending litigation, personnel matters. When you're in closed session, you are still subject to Chapter 21, the open meetings law, and there are set procedures that are required. You have to have, you know, minutes, you have to have a recording, you have to, you know, follow certain procedures with regard to that. Exempt sessions are actually totally exempt from Chapter 21. They're private, like closed sessions, but they are actually not even subject to Chapter 21. Thus, you do not have to take minutes. You don't have to technically post an agenda like you would for a closed session, which is very precise, and that you have to give the exact reason that you're going into closed session. That said, I often advise board secretaries to still put that on the agenda. Like, let's say, for the example, for exempt session is negotiation strategy. When you're in negotiations, you are not in a closed session. Under the law, you're in an exempt session. However, I usually suggest that it's always wise to post something outside the door because your community member walking by and they see members of the board behind closed doors and they don't see anything, they're going to, you know, maybe ask a question. And so I usually suggest you put exempt session, negotiation strategy. The other big one that's exempt is teacher termination hearings. Again, there's often a misnomer that you're in closed session for that. You are actually in an exempt session. It's expressly authorized in Chapter 279 that says exempt sessions for teacher termination hearings. We will notice those up under the law, but it is not subject to Chapter 21. So I just refresher on those. You all know, open session, obviously, most of the time you're going to be in an open session unless you have that express authority to go in and close. For public records law, I think the most important thing to remember as board members is that even if you are on your personal cellphone or you're on your personal email account, it is not about who owns, like, the device that you're working on. It's the content of the communication on there, okay? And so a lot of times, people think, well, this is my own personal, so anything I say on there is not subject to Chapter 22, public records. That is not correct. So if you have a, if you, if somebody asks for, I want any and all messages, you know, to and from Deb and John from these particular dates, let's say, okay? If you're communicating with John because you guys are great family friends and you're going on a joy vacation together in a couple of weeks and you're talking about who's bringing what, that's not subject to the open meetings law. But if you guys are talking about something related to your function as board members or the district, and it's on your personal communication devices, that would be subject to the public records law. And so that's just something important for board members to always be cognizant of the fact that anytime you're communicating, whether it's to a district email account or a personal, or yeah, that it's going to be potentially subject to the open meetings law. Confidential public records, when those requests come in, typically, you're going to work through us. If we do, we've had, I don't know, recently, did you get the recent one? Okay. We've had a couple of ones that have been blasted across the state over the past week or so, asking for a lot of personnel information. Usually, you're going to work through counsel on that or at least touch base before we disclose any of those communications and we help because some documents have to be completely discarded and not released at all. Others have to be released, but personally identifiable information can be redacted, and there's express provisions and a law for that. So just those are like the two big things, I guess, you know, to always remember as far as the laws that are out there. As far as the role of the board, the things that I would focus on there is we usually kind of view it as, you have the role as legislating, okay? So that's like rulemaking. You have the power under the code to set a lot of different rules. Like examples that we usually talk about are, you know, you get to set the number of schools, the tenant center locations, your calendar, all of those graduation requirements, and a lot of things that fall within your right to basically legislate. And, you know, a couple of years ago, there's this concept of Dillon's Rule, right? That you may or may not have heard of, that schools are under, which is different from cities and counties, which are under home rule. Under Dillon's Rule, it basically said you can only do those things expressly authorized by statute or necessarily implied. Well, they broadened the law a little bit. Some people called it home rule light a couple of years ago. They've not completely overhauled Dillon's Rule, but what they said was, is that now we can do things unless the action is taken as basically contrary to something that's in an existing law. And we can look at statutes now for schools in a broad fashion. Before, we had to look at them narrowly. So we've had, of course, as lawyers, because we're kind of geeky that way, we've been having some fun, right? When issues have come up now, where we can say, you know, I don't think the Department of Ed's position is necessarily still valid, given the fact that we can now take a broader interpretation or reading of this particular statute. And so we had some dialogue with the DE. And so, you know, as you continue to serve and things come up, there may be a time where we may say to Lindsay, you know, we think you can do that now under the new change in the law. So your authority has been broadened. So from that perspective, you have more legislative, I guess, power to, from that perspective. Another area that we often focus on is the role as adjudicator. And that's probably one of the toughest roles that you have as a board because you will be the body that will sit at a student expulsion hearing, at a teacher termination hearing. You will be sitting before the parents or the teacher. The important thing to remember when you're the adjudicator is that you are the trier of fact. You are like sitting as a juror in the matter. So that is why it's so important when there is a personnel matter or there is a student matter. I know you're in a small community. I grew up with a class of 21, so I know, it's a very small community too. I know as board members, people will come and tell you things, right? And that's why it's so important, though, to say, thank you, I so appreciate that, like giving feedback. I would encourage you, you know, to communicate with this building principal or with the superintendent or whatever, and just say that, and because I never know what could ultimately become a board issue and it's important that you follow, you know, our kind of chain of command. Therefore, I'm, you know, be able to, you know, assess the situation and when it comes to me. Because there will be a time, sometimes as lawyers, I've had to tell a board member at a termination hearing, I'm not comfortable with you sitting in this case because I have too much information that either the teacher's representative or somebody else has said that they believe that you can't be an impartial decision maker. And frankly, as a lawyer, when we're advising and we're sitting with all of you, that's where we would sit, is to hear the evidence as well. I don't want anything to jeopardize that particular case. And so it's just important to try to, you know, when people come to you, you don't want to turn them away. You just have to try to politely say, follow that particular chain of command. Same thing with student disciplinary appearance. It's the exact same thing. Also, good conduct policy decisions sometimes can go through the appeal process and come before you. And the reason why it's so important that you stay neutral is because there's that concept of due process. You've heard that, right? And so each person that comes before you is supposed to be entitled, you know, to that due process. And one of that is the opportunity and the right to be heard. In order to do that, they have to, can't be above, you know, have already made up their mind when they come before you. So those are the big ways in which you act as an adjudicator. The other role that you have is negotiator. I've heard you guys talk about your negotiations team and things like that. Certainly, Chapter 20 has had major changes over the last couple of years, which has somewhat, I think, you're still negotiating and I don't know how, I don't know how you guys are set up. If you have, you know, how much you have in your contract now, how you set it, if you have, you know, management committee, labor management committee, or however you're doing things. But I've always said, just because it's not maybe as formalized at the bargaining table, all of the issues, still doesn't mean there can't be give and take as far as negotiations and things like that. Some of it just may be done more through the administrative level and talking to you about that. But it is a huge also part of what you do, but it just doesn't have as many things in your contracts anymore as you used to. Another role that you have is plaintiff and defendant in litigation. And that's, you know, nobody wants to see the lawyer, but unfortunately, that is some part of.
No. I think that was our speaker.
Oh, okay. But that's another area of the law where, or another, I guess, role that you guys have. When we come in and talk to you guys about litigation, typically, we're going to be in closed session. And something that you often hear is that you can't take action in a closed session. And I want to, again, kind of dispel that. You do, you don't take formalized action, but if we come to you and we're in litigation, it is very common for us in a closed session to say, I need a consensus from you as a board as to authority to potentially settle a matter. Or where, you know, where do you want us to go? Because we're your representative. Well, you're not officially voting, but you're giving me some general consensus. Oh, no. So we give you, you give us consensus on what to do. And from there, we will act on your behalf. But the reason it's not a problem, from the sense of, some people will get worried initially, if I feel like we're kind of taking a vote here or just doing something. You're not, because any agreement that we would reach as far as settlement has to come back to the board and it has to be voted on in a public session. So nothing that you're doing as far as giving us consensus is any final action that can bind the board in any way. And so there would be no other way for us to proceed unless, you know, because each one of you individually, that's the other thing is, as you well know, cannot act individually to bind the school district in any way. And so that is why we have to meet with all of you, you know, in a closed session if that were to happen. Communications, I just want to touch on that a little bit, about how you communicate as a board. I don't know what your policy says, but I'm assuming you have a policy that talks about who can, for instance, contact legal counsel. Usually, it's like the superintendent, board president, maybe the business manager, depending on how it's written. Sometimes you have also policy about how are things going to flow as far as you, you know, usually, it's your board president, superintendent that set the agenda. Each of you have the right to request certain things to be put on the agenda. Those are all things that, you know, as a body, you want to kind of have an idea collectively about how you want to, you know, how you want to govern and things like that. Your communications with superintendent staff, kind of as I addressed, I guess, addressed before, I think it's so important for board members to have communication with, you know, with your superintendent and to try to flow things through the superintendent as opposed to going out and having those individual conversations. It's great to hear what's going on and things like that. But I always, it's so funny, I always get calls every now and then, either come a board member or somebody telling me about a board member. It's like, well, they just say, well, I just can't help it. People just call me all the time, you know, like I'm just. And I always kind of say, well, a lot of times, people do that because they know that they're getting what they want in that first. You know, so if you are the person that says, thank you, and, you know, you should talk to the building principal, the superintendent, it's funny how, you know, you don't get bombarded with as many questions as you do. And so I always, I always, you know, laugh sometimes when that happens. And so that's just something to keep in mind as far as communications go. Attorney communications and confidentiality. When we talk in a closed session or when I send an opinion letter to Lindsay or anything like that, you are the client. Lindsay's not my client, Gail's not my client, the board as a whole. And Deb, you're not my client. The board as a whole is our client. And so when we send you something and it says attorney-client communications, it remains privileged unless and until you decide to waive that privilege. Now, even though I said all of you collectively are the board or my client, any one of you could potentially waive that privilege by discussing something that is supposed to be kept confidential. And so I just, I just, you know, make sure that everybody knows when we're in a closed session that those closed session communications need to be kept confidential, no matter what it is, but particularly with attorney-client communication and any sort of written correspondence and things like that. Criticism, public comment. You said that you typically have a public comment at your board meetings. I'm assuming you probably don't have too much problem, but if you did, I mean, it's always important to set your parameters. I'm assuming you have time, place, and manner restrictions as far as what people can do and things like that. And just make sure that you're faithful to that and that you're consistent with that. We've, in the past year, year and a half, we've actually had some litigation about a school district and how they ran their public comment. Because they love hearing positive things, but then when things got negative, they shut people down. And there was a First Amendment argument made saying, hey, you opened up the doors, you say public comment, you're creating a public forum. You're allowing anybody to come forward to say negative or positive things about the school. And so as hard as it is sometimes to hear, you feel like they're attacking people, as long as they remain, you know, and have professional decorum and are not being disruptive, we have to take the nude and the bad, you know, when it comes to that. So just always remember that. And I talked a little bit about the chain of command. You guys, it sounds like you understand that, you know that. The last thing that I would just touch upon is conflicts of interest as board members. There is a provision in the law that talks about that a board member cannot have an interest in a contract with the school district that exceeds. It used to be $2,500. It was raised this past legislative session to $6,000. You can have an interest greater than that, but it has to be subject to bid. And sometimes that happens when you have a board member that perhaps has a business that is a vendor or that does some work or maybe has an interest in a construction company or does things like that. As long as you go to competitive bid on it and it's open to everybody and they, you know, they're awarded that and the individual would recuse themselves from the vote, you can still do that. But that doesn't mean that an individual, you know, can't do, you know, little things. Perhaps I've had some be, you know, a driver or, I mean, a substitute or do, I mean, it's all sorts of different things. But as long as you say below that $6,000 threshold, you're fine. The other area of conflict of interest The other area of conflict of interest is just simply not using your position for any sort of personal or private gain. And I'll give you an example of one that I'm dealing with. You know, right now, I have a newly elected board member who was a, just retired as a teacher a year or two ago and is still, part of her early retirement package was taking into the district's insurance, and she pays a portion of that insurance. So the question has come up, if she is involved in negotiations, probably not an issue anymore. Insurance can't be part of the collective bargaining agreement. However, there will be a time when the board has to make a decision about insurance. Well, that individual can be personally impacted by how much the premiums are, what the deductible is, those sort of things. And so we've had a discussion with that board member, you will have to recuse yourself from any vote related to district insurance because you're going to personally benefit from any decision perhaps that's made on that. So that's one of the examples, you know, that you don't really think about that may come up, the things you obviously would think about is if you had some other job or something like that that was somehow going to be impacted by something that the school did. Those are provisions in the law, to just be mindful of. If your gut tells you, I always say, go with your, I mean, it's a personal thing, sometimes there's not a legal conflict, we get questions a lot, and I say, I don't see, think that it's a legal conflict, but each and every one of you has that ethical gut conflict check. And there may be times that you just say, for whatever reason, I know this person, I, you know, have some sort of dealings that just do not make me feel comfortable that I can vote on this particular matter. You always have the right to recuse yourself for a conflict or any issue that you don't feel comfortable with. Hey, that's like a 10-minute life's path as I can. I mean, those are like the, the big highlights. I mean, typically, I gave Lindsay a packet, which is yadick about different things, that you can, you know, peruse as you want, goes into much more detail on open meetings and public records laws, simply because it's always good to have, like, I always say, go back and look at those things. I always tell my board secretaries, have chapter 21 at your meetings, because sometimes something comes up and it's so easy to be able to just go, you know, and look that up. So, that's just really the highlights of what I wanted to hit. If there's anything in particular, or, you know, roles that I kind of cover, let me know.
Do you guys have any questions for Danielle? She's covered a lot of important information, but anything that you'd like to ask her while she's here?
So what happens if John and I and Andrew are going down the road in a car, can we talk about school board stuff?
I, no, I would prefer if you know. The three of you, no, honestly, if the three of you are going somewhere to, like, ISB conventions, people ride in the car together, excellent. I always suggest doing that, because you ride all together, it's probably, you know, even though you know you're not going to be making maybe deliberate decisions or anything like that, you don't know if you might be talking about, you know, something there or there. But I always say, that's one of those two ones where I always, you have to be mindful of what you're talking about, because most of the time it's just going to be social or something like that. And the other thing is, you know, you ride in the car together, but I also tell people, it's so easy after the board meeting, there'll be board meetings I've been, I'm at, and like, I'm leaving and I'm like, I know that I, there's still like a majority of the board sitting around chatting about something that they just did, and nobody even thinks twice about it, right? Because the meeting's adjourned and you might just start talking, and technically, that's a problem. And the only thing that will usually become a problem is if like, for some reason, a newspaper person is still there and all of a sudden, you know, they see something like that. You know, that can be something to be concerned. So just be mindful of those things, keep it social, and just whenever you have any doubt, I always tell my board secretaries, if you have any doubt whatsoever, just post in our meeting. It's not that hard. We've had so many requests for public records lately. That, I posted a convention, just because it's like, I don't know if you guys are all going to be together, but it's like, I, it's just something simple that we've had so many requests lately on public records.
The overriding thing that has helped me is, they really want the debate to be in public. So, so when we're really debating things, they, they really want people to have the opportunity to see how this policy and those things came about. So, so really, that's kind of the key is, is, you know, we want most of the debate in the public sphere, and so that's, that's really what we got, what the goal is.
Absolutely. And, you know, Lindsay's, you know, sees enough, he knows what things, you know, as far as shared one-way communication, I always say, you know, Lindsay, you know, if he gives out a report to the board or sends something out, there's nothing wrong with the one-way communication, and there's no reason that one of you can't, you know, respond back to Lindsay individually. When we get into problems, right, is reply all, and what do you think?
Yeah, because you're, see, you're taking the debate out of the public sphere.
And it's simultaneous, it's, you know, it's happening at this time, and that's kind of what the Public Information Board, for those who don't know, is the Iowa Public Information Board was created and it oversees chapter 21 and 22, and it's kind of the contemporaneous nature of it, you know, and so I always tell people, yeah, if you can communicate outside of the meetings, people are like, well, I can't say anything. Yeah, you can, I mean, you can get information in advance, and if you have questions about an agenda item in advance, it's okay to call Lindsay or to ask Deb, you know, you know, something about it, it's just you can't collectively, as a majority, start discussing or debating an issue beforehand, and that's when we can get into trouble, so.
Having Danielle here. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. So on that discussion, I think I heard most of it, it was kind of cutting out. Can you speak to a little bit about committees? So, as we, as we're growing, we're trying to get more things done in preparation for a board meeting, and committees can help us do that, but let's take, for example, facilities, which Jeff and I will be working on. And if we're sitting down with architect, or we're sitting down with student enrollment, and we're talking about things that we will be working on to bring to the board, is the, is the issue on a quorum, or just speak a little bit to how much we can do in a committee or in preparation to board members, it would be certainly not a committee, relative to the open meeting law?
And it really is about how the committee is created. Committees that are created by the board are technically subject to the open meetings law. So it has nothing to do with the number that is on there, it's about, is it established or created by the board? And that comes right out of statute as far as whether or not a committee is, is such. And so, your question is, you know, point is well taken. You can have informal committees, but ones that, like, your standing committees, I mean, most of the districts, I can tell you, you know, in the metro area, I mean, if facilities is meeting, and policies meeting, if all of those are meeting, they are usually posted. And, you know, they follow that posting requirement as far as that goes. Other more informal committees, if they're not established, if Lindsay wants to do, create an ad hoc committee to get some feedback before he comes to the board for a matter, that's a gray area, because technically, it's not created by the board, it may just be informal, but if they're actually going to make a formal recommendation or policy recommendation to the board, there is some authority to suggest that maybe that committee is subject to the open meetings law as well. It's basically if they're making decisions of formal policy to, or recommendations to the board for action, that's one thing. If it's more of, hey, this committee met, here's some general things that they thought, you know, and I took that into consideration in making my recommendation to you, I don't think that is subject to, to chapter 21. I will say committees is one of those gray areas that even we kind of pull our hair out a little bit, and I will default to my rule, when I usually get the question, I say, is it a big deal to post? I mean, are you, I mean, most people are not going to show up at your policy committee meetings, I can pretty much assure you of that. And if they do, they won't stay long, probably, right? I mean, it's, well, painless perhaps, it's, you know, a little mundane, you know, from time to time. So my suggestion would be on any of your standing committees that are established by the board, that they should be, you know, should be public.
And so, Paul, that means posting an agenda, does it, minutes?
Yes, yes. All of them according to those. It's chapter 21. Exactly, yep.
That's it. Thank you for asking that, too. Any other questions?
Do we have directors' insurance? Are we listed by name?
Just to support memory. And you do have governmental immunity as well, so, you know, things that perhaps, you know, were to happen, there's going to be things that you're going to have immunity from as, as a governmental entity, plus, as she said, any actions that you would take that can be subject to some sort of legal action or litigation, it's going to be covered through the district's insurance, you know, policy. So, unless you completely act outside of this, or you do something completely rogue and illegal, but I don't suspect that being a problem.
Having Danielle here can save us a lot of heartache and headache. We take it very seriously, especially when we have new board members coming on, we want to make sure that everyone, veteran and new, know what's going on. We had another person in her firm, Drew, come out and talk to our entire staff at the beginning. There's just some things that you, you want your people to know and just to review, just to kind of, you know, make sure we all are on the same page type of thing. So thank you very much for, that's very informative, I greatly appreciate it. Does anyone have any more questions for Danielle, though?
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. What is that sound?
Okay, so what you got going on, you got a belt going on over there.
Sounds like basketball.
Yeah, so when you, tomorrow calls somebody, they have to change that belt out, because it's flopping up there.
We might have some people who know about that.
Okay, thank you.
But anyway, that's what that is.
Okay.
Okay, guys, so, the next item on the agenda, ISB Annual Convention Delegate Assembly. So this is just an awareness, this is tomorrow.
Everybody's registered except Tyler, because he's out of the country. Hopefully, it's very informative, we'll report back and do something.
And tomorrow, just so you guys know, tomorrow is the new member portion of it, I'll also be attending in the morning.
Oh, okay.
There's a, like a delegate assembly. And then, John, are you able to attend on Thursday?
I am.
Yeah, okay, so then we're usually all there, so I'll reach out, just to let you guys know when to be pleased to get a word, in between sessions. Okay. Perfect, thank you. Next item on the list is the district parent of the annual goals for 2019, 2020. We typically go through this, and then just for the new board members, that'd be nice.
Right, is, are there any administrators that would like to add anything or update for the 1920? I have some things that I would like to throw out, but anything in particular that maybe you're doing within your building or you'd like the board to know about?
One of the things that we have for the new board members is, there's been a lot of time and a lot of effort put into these, and one of the things that the board has made loud and clear is that we want to make sure that people know what they are and how they're being implemented. One of the things that we are trying to do, Carrie and I are attending parent-teacher conferences, we have one coming up on Thursday in the middle school and in the intermediate buildings, we call it a coffee and conferences. And our goal is to do this, our goal is to talk to people about these so that they know exactly what's happening, and also that the Portrait of a Graduate is an initiative that we're working on so that they know what we're doing there and how these kind of intermingle, if you want to say that. Looking forward to it, we'll do another one on Monday, and we'll do that at the elementary. Again, more than anything, trying to get that, the word out about what this is and what's happening. We had an opportunity to do it, the high school had their conferences a little bit earlier, and we were there. Anything you want to add to that?
No, I think it's just that, you know, we don't have the same kind of contact in buildings, so.
Right.
We had, I mean, the high school was good, and now we're just taking it on the road.
The road show.
So, the road show's ready.
Thank you. Looks like the next item on the agenda is the administrator reports. And I know specifically, we called out the Ed Leader 21 Houston Conference Report.
Yep.
Yes.
And I, Carrie, if you don't mind, like, I think we were looking for a little bit more on this, just to help them out, maybe like a 10-minute.
I have a little PowerPoint for you.
Oh, you do?
For slideshow, yes. So. All right. So, on this first, on the first slide, there, I, there's that quote, I'll just let you read that to yourself. Brene, Brene Brown is the hot, I mean, she's talked about in lots of different, I think, professional learning, professional areas, not just education. I think almost everybody up here is reading or has just finished reading, there's Dare to Lead is, is her big one right now. If you have, if you are interested in learning a little bit about her, what her thoughts are on leadership, there is a great Netflix.
Yes.
Documentary or TED Talk type thing, be a good, I mean, I would recommend that. So she was frequently quoted throughout the three days that we spent in Houston. I chose, I just happened to chose this quote, because when we think of people, where people can be themselves, we have to remember that everybody comes with their own story, and everybody comes at a different, you know, entry point. And so, my belief, my perspective is my truth. So how do we take those, those different truths, different perspectives, and bring them all together into one learning community? And I'm talking about being us as leaders, and we're looking at our, at our staff, whether they're our certified staff or non-certified staff, and making sure that everybody has that feeling of a sense of belonging, because once you have that, you're going to be able to move mountains at that point. But people have to feel that they have a place. So one of the things that we've been doing is building that collective efficacy, and that is, if any research that you do in education, a big educational researcher is John Hattie, and he, his research says that collective efficacy has a bigger bang for your buck than anything else that you can do for kids. And what that means when I say collective efficacy is that we have to believe that through our collective actions, we can positively influence students' outcomes. So before I can have collective efficacy at this table, I have to believe in myself. Then I have to believe in the person across the hall from me, I have to believe in the person down the hall from me, then I have to believe in the person across the street from me. And that's really what we're doing as we are working on Portrait of a Graduate, we are building a strong sense of collective efficacy, not just within buildings, but within our district. So, one of our big takeaways was that we're on the right track, because if you want to move from good to great, which is exactly what we're saying we want to do, because we could, once again, rest back on our laurels and say, we're doing, you know, why do we have to change? Well, we'll get to that in a minute, because I think we all know why we have to change. But, we have to remember that we're working with people in a system that were trained in a different kind of system. Our teachers that are, that are coming to us are not, are trained differently to be teachers. So, anyway, that was something, that was, that was a, just a little thing on Brene Brown. So, we had three days at Houston. Our first day was a leadership convening of our administrative leadership team, where we're coming together in smaller groups with 88 other people that are part of this before we went to the conference. So, what were, three big takeaways from that are, how are we working as a leadership team together? So we did the, and I know we talked about this before, we talked, we did the predictive index, where we each did that independently, and we really focused on communication. That was the only one that we focused on so far. So we got something that looks like this, with the little, we've got connecting, respecting, persuading, and telling. And each of these little blue circles represents one member of the administrative team. So if I, and I will just talk about myself, I am high, I'm connecting and respecting. That's what I'm, I mean, I'm all about building relationships, and I've got to talk things out, which I'm sure you're shocked at, but not everybody on our team is like that. So, when you think of the team dynamics of a leadership team, how do we listen to each other? Because if we're not doing that, how are we ever going to get where we want to be? So that was one big part of the learning that we did on that first day. The next thing we talked about, another big chunk, was what is our observational protocol? And the great thing about this is we had already started this work in the summer, where now what we're doing, we have, we meet as an administrative team once a week, on average. So, every other week, we are now, one week, one Thursday, we'll meet here in the district conference room, and then the next Thursday, we'll meet out in another, we'll be in a building. And what we do during that time is we're doing walkthroughs together. What is our observational protocol? How are we doing that? So we are not only the, being visible as an administrative leadership team throughout our district, we're also having those conversations about best practice. And what do those conversations then look like when a building principal is having those conversations with a staff member? So we're making sure that we're all on the same page as to what, well, I might think it's one thing, but Vic might think it's another thing. If we don't talk about that, how will we know that we're being true to our protocol? So that's, that was one of.
Kind of like rounding?
Yes. And some people might call instructional rounds or that kind of thing, you betcha. The last one was, how are we creating conditions for our students to be leaders of their own learning? That gets to what I was talking about just a little bit ago, about the whole Brene Brown quote. We are getting, we are getting kids ready, we are doing 21st century learning, thinking about 21st century learning versus 21st century teaching. Our teachers, myself included, and I think everybody here at this table, has been, when we went through our teacher prep program, we, we all were taught and learned the same way, and we all went to school the same way. We are, and that hasn't changed when you get to higher it. We are expecting and we want our teachers to really do a flip on that. Well, how do we get there? So I think it's not, it's, it's just as much about teachers as it is about kids. Because you know what, it's hard. Excuse me. It can be really intimidating and hard to, to stand up in front of your peers and say, oh my gosh, I don't know that I know how to do that. Because teaching for a long, long time has always been, you know what, I'm on, I'm on, I'm on my own, I can close my door, I can do whatever I want. We know that's not what's going to happen, but that's what, that's what collective efficacy is not about. Collective efficacy is about opening our doors and, and sharing our struggles along with our triumphs. So, when we have these discussions about learning versus teaching, what does that mean? What is, I mean, we could all think that means something very, very different. So that was the, that was the first biggie, I mean, that's what Portrait of a Graduate is all about, utilizing our district leadership team. When I say district leadership team, I'm not talking about the people here at this table only, I'm talking about the team that we have put together, that we invited anybody in the district to be a part of. And we have representations from all buildings, all content, lots of different content areas, so we've got a great mix of people. And how are we utilizing that? We don't want it to just be, oh, I went in so I can check, oh, we checked off, guess what, we met with everybody. No, this is really about the grassroots up, as to, I, I might think, you know, that's going to work great, but we better discuss that with our teachers, we better be transparent, and we have, just like we expect them to give voice and choice in the classroom, we've got to give them some voice and choice in this work, because they're the ones doing the work. And then the last one is developing that district framework of what are we going to be really, what are our non-negotiables? What are we going to be tied on? And what are we going to be loose on, that we're going to give some more autonomy to our teachers when we're talking about what this work is. So those were, those were some of our biggies from the conference.
And I just want to say, it looks like we have about five minutes left.
And guess what, I have one slide left.
Oh, you do?
I'm almost done.
Oh, yeah, we'll have it.
I know, I, so, these were from the work that we, from when we went to the conference, and then, because we were, I know we all thanked you last time, I mean, we had a group of 10 of us that went. So when we did our, kind of our debriefing, we debriefed every day, at night, at dinner, and then we had one big debrief at the very end. So from that work, what are our priorities? Well, educating our teachers, getting the, a staff baseline, and then involving stakeholders, and then also involving our students. So how are we going to do that? Well, staff survey on current reality, which we've already done, we just did that, and we did it just on two areas of Portrait of a Graduate, we did it on communication and global citizenship, and I think I spoke about this last time. So, involve that district leadership team. The district leadership team, that's where we got the questions for our survey, we will be sharing our data with the district leadership team coming up after Thanksgiving. And then the last one, shadow students. This was, this is a big movement across the country, especially when you're talking about high school students, well, talking about high school students, where you have somebody that shadows this one student throughout the whole day and, and is like that student, is doing the student work, is doing, what is it like to be a student in this day and age? How does it feel? Is it, is it really different from when we were students? Or, I don't know. So that, there's a whole movement around this. So that was another idea that we had in there, too, that we would like to put into place.
That really rings with me, because when I heard, when I was at the Iowa Association School Board, where they said, what if you had to go back to school as a freshman? That really, kind of, I was like.
How different would it be? How different would it be?
Yeah.
You know, then if it was like when I was there, I'd be like, well, we need to do it different. I don't know what it is.
No.
But that was the thought, that that really rang with me.
To get that point of view.
Do you want to do it? Do you want to sign up?
Oh yeah, I'd love to.
Shadow.
There you go. All right, then for this, this spring, we will begin developing the competencies around global citizenship and communication. We know we've got a lot of work to do, but if we try to do all of that work with all of our words, we're going to, we're going to be, instead of going this deep, we're going to go like this. You know, to do something right and to do it well, you have to chunk it up. And so that's how we're chunking it up. And when we develop those competencies, what will that look like? It will look like I can statements for learning targets, grade spans, and then in the summer would be that district alignment work. Okay, how do those, how do those grade spans go together? Do we really do this, or are we doing this, or are we doing this? You know, I mean, there's lots of-
Like building to build, it's like that.
Yes. That's exactly what that is.
Continuing directionally like that.
So that's it in a nutshell. I don't know if you guys have anything to add?
Was this the first time? Not maybe not the first time, but you guys, with 10 of you, so-
You all went.
It was in-
Except for this man right here. He held the portrait of a graduate.
He stayed around.
Designated survivor.
That's what I said, that's true.
Great way to say it.
But that was an opportunity, right? Where you said you could get away, you could do this, and you were all, most of you together, but you could really, you thought that was beneficial.
We wish, I mean, that is a very good conference. And we wish it was at a different time, but it, we don't get to pick that it's in October. That's just when that conference always is. And so we did do a lot of debriefing on, okay, now that if we've all had the opportunity to go, now Vic hasn't had the opportunity to go. My hope would be is that we can maybe start doing more groups after this. But it's rare, it's one thing in the summer, we will have one big long meeting in June, we call it a retreat, but all we're doing, like this year, we went to cabin coffee. I wouldn't, you know, that's great, but that's not really a retreat. We don't-
Retreat on a budget.
We love cabin coffee, yes, yes, we do. It's a great place to go. My point on that was, there, when we got, when we had the opportunity to go to Ohio at the beginning of this leadership conference, or academy, I should, that's what it's called, I don't know that we've ever had the opportunity to spend that much time where we just talked about the things that we needed to do and there was no interruptions. And I would-
That Summer Institute, just to echo what Carrie's saying, like it was, we were sequestered away and the sole focus was Portrait of a Graduate, 21st century education stuff. It was, it was fantastic.
Even our, even our, even in the evenings, when we were laughing and having fun, we still kept coming back to those. So I, I think that has done worlds of good to, for us as a team and built us as to getting to know each other better in different roles. So thank you very much for that opportunity.
Good. Well, thank you very much for that update.
If there's board members that have an interest, I know that you had an opportunity to go to Phoenix with us in the, kind of, the beginning stages. But Carrie has hit the nail on the head. That is an opportunity where we're able to talk with our group for an extended period of time about what it means for Portrait of a Graduate and 21st century learning. It's an outstanding opportunity. So if someone wants to jump in there, let us know. And thank you, by the way, for letting us do that. That's, you opened your checkbook, I guess, to let us do that, and hopefully it'll be well worth the while.
Thank you.
Are you seeing anybody teach this? Like if you go out, if you, if you had a bachelor's degree and you went out and got a master's or, you know, when you get administration, is there anybody teaching this?
I would say at the higher ed levels, I think that people teach about it, but I don't know that they actually teach it that way.
It's kind of just progress, right?
Yes. And I don't know what the rest of you would say. I think that when you're, the classes that you take in education are a lot of philosophy about education, but the nuts and bolts of what it looks like and what you do are, you learn on the job in student teaching.
Higher ed, actually, when you read about Portrait of a Graduate, 21st Century Education, higher ed actually holds us back because that's the fear is we have to get kids ready for college, and they're, they're a little more traditional. I think if colleges were to be a little more innovative, I think that would free high schools, and then therefore middle schools and elementaries, to be a little more creative and innovative.
I think-
But the, the person who drives the ship is higher ed, especially in the district here. And so the pressure is, we got to get ready for college, we got to get ready for college.
I mean, standard spaced grading would be a great example of that. When you think about our grading and what that means when you get to high school.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I, I would say as a board member who did go, it was a tremendous experience. And you get to be like the designated board member in all of the meetings, because there are a few board members that go from other districts, but they really look for, I was I didn't put this up. Definitely. Thank you. Okay, any announcements and celebrations?
Anyone have anything that they'd like to, go ahead Vic, if you want to say something?
Gilbert High School has opportunity to participate in a program that was just released a couple of years ago called the Seal of Bilinguality. So that means if students can show that they're proficient in two different languages, they can actually earn this seal of bilinguality from the Department of Ed that goes directly onto their transcripts. So what happens is they would show proficiency in English, obviously, through the testing that we do. There are several routes through like the ACT or the SAT or, or any, you know, local testing that we do. And then if they can, there's about 12 tests that are, you can choose from a pool, and one of those you choose, and if they can show proficiency in a second language at different levels based on this testing, they get this actually seal that goes onto their transcripts. So when they're walking out and applying for colleges, they can show that they're bilingual. And then I think there's like 12 or 14 different languages you can choose from, plus being proficient in English. So we're going to offer it this year. It's similar to the ACT or the AP test. You don't have to do it. It's something that you can do. We'll offer it to any student that wants to try to do it. But, you know, the test is pretty rigorous. There's speaking, you know, some listening and some computation portions. So it's pretty rigorous in the, in the second language, but we do have some students that are proficient in Spanish and Chinese or Korean or Russian. And so they can actually pick up this seal, so we're going to give it a try for the first time this year and offer the test.
Sounds great. Nice.
Just to FYI, our students, our English language learning population of students, they take a test every spring. It's called the Alpha 21. And that's, I mean, I'm not saying it's not the same test, but they have to take an reading, writing, and speaking. They have three portions of that test, and that will say their proficiency in English as to, and if they score four or five, then they can exit out of the program. But if they score below that, then they're going to have, they have the opportunity to receive ESL services, English language, or ELL services through the district. So just an FYI.
Cool.
It's a little, the Seal of Bilinguality and the ELP are a little different from each other. But this is for, for any student, you know, if we have a student that takes four years of Spanish who wants to try to get the Seal of Bilinguality, then they can take the national exam, we have, we proctored it, and, you know, it's done all on the computer. Even the speaking portions are done through headphones, and it goes to a scoring center, and they say whether or not you're proficient in that language. And then we report to the state the number of students that we have that are, would be considered bilinguals.
Can you take it multiple times then, too? I mean, if you don't pass it, let's say you do it a year-
Yeah, I think you offer it once a year, but you can take it at any point in your high school career. So if you have a student that wants to try it as a sophomore or junior, they can try to get it as a senior year, their senior year, but-
Just to get a feel for the test, I mean typically you have-
Yeah, yeah. And our, and our Spanish instructor and our ESL coordinator have been talking about more of the options they want to use. It's the most recommended by the state, and that's what we will go with. And then there's just, it's similar to the ACT, there's a fee that the student would pay and the parents would pay to take the test. It's something that's optional, so, but I think it's kind of a neat thing to say we have X number of students that are bilinguals. So, and good for their resumes.
Cool, thank you.
At the middle school, just a few things. Lear Sports is underway, the first season anyway. We have one of the highest numbers of wrestlers out. I think last count was, I think we had 21 wrestlers out from middle school level. That's one of the higher numbers we've had in my time there. So that's good.
What grades, what grades is that?
Seventh and eighth grade.
Plus we got a pony room for the wrestlers.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. We got our new mats in there, and that's great, in the, in the, in the new room. So that's fantastic. Veterans Assembly went off and, and went really well, got lots of good feedback on that. That's put on and planned by the seventh grade every year. Had our fall choir concert just the other night. And it's really neat, Mr. Johnson does a combined choir, so each grade level sings a couple of songs and he has them all on stage. And there was something like 188 kids up there.
Oh, Charlie for you.
Combined choirs. Yeah, it's, it's darn near, darn near 50% of the kids are in choir. So, so it is amazing. That's pretty awesome. And, and then the last celebration, and I'm going to read this, make sure I get it right. So speaking of choir, the eighth grade is going to lead a demonstration for the, at a clinic for the Iowa Music Educators Association and their annual conference. So that's coming up. And then a seventh grader, Z Catfield, was selected for the Opus Honor Choir. So there's 2,600 students that were nominated by their choir directors, and he got selected for one of the spots. So I don't know how many spots there were, but, but 2,600 kids were nominated and Z Catfield's seventh grader was selected for one of the spots. So that's a nice, a nice song.
Great, thank you. At the intermediate lab school here, I had about 23 teachers participate in a book study with called a Leader in Me, which is around Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, which then he derived Seven Habits of Highly Effective Kids. And so bringing in a Leader in Me program that really emphasizes on those seven habits and how can we build those upon our kids at a young age, so then hopefully as adults they can exhibit those seven habits. And so I had seven teachers, along with Carrie and myself, attended a two-day training. Basically, how can we practice those seven habits? And how do we, how, there's a lot of reflecting on ourselves and our own practice and our own mission statement to be better people, then how can we instill that, model that, and allow for opportunities to practice within our students? And so Carrie and I are going to an administrative informational meeting in a couple of weeks to learn a little bit more, but we may be coming back with you about possibly the intermediate school being a Leader in Me school and working directly with that program and bringing that in. And we see it as really a tool that connects with Portrait of a Graduate and driving, like if we-
You have good alignment on that. That's exactly what I was thinking.
Exactly. If you have and can practice those seven habits, then you're going to be able to collaborate, you're going to be able to be a critical thinker and be able, so we're hoping that can be the tool, some of the tools that we use to drive Portrait of a Graduate. So that's just kind of a little snippet, but we'll be sharing more with you.
It was a great two days. Amazing.
Yeah, Covey has some really good stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Cool. Thank you guys very much.
Just a couple of quick things. Deb Parcell wanted me to make an announcement to you guys. It was about a year ago that after a school board commission that we were talking about, you know, what are we going to be looking at for our food service, and we're trying to turn some things around as far as budget-wise. Board members, you're invited on November 26th for roast turkey, mashed potatoes, turkey gravy, fresh broccoli salad, fruit salad dinner roll, and pumpkin dessert.
Is it, was that Tuesday? What is that?
That would be a Tuesday, I believe. Is that right?
Where do we go?
Well, you can go to, if you have kids, if you have kids in the building and want to eat, I'm sure they would love to eat with mom or dad. That would be great. If not, you can find out, and we'll get you set up. These building principals can tell you when they, when they have their lunch set up.
Can I, if you guys, somebody else? Yeah.
That he won't surprise any of you.
They won't, they'll pretend like they don't know.
Yeah, Jonah would love it.
So you would be like-
One other thing that we're going to do, I want to let you know, Gil has it in our kind of upcoming meetings, but our next meeting, which is December 9th, we're going to have the, basically the State of the District presentation. And some of the things that we're looking at there are where are we at financially? Some of you guys that are new board members or even veteran board members, you know, we're going to have Travis talk a little bit about where we're at, so you guys know, and people ask you, you know, what are we looking at? Enrollment. We're going to have John Mueller from ISPOS talk about that. And if we're just, what we want to do is we want to make sure, and we're, we're going to try to invite as much of the public as possible. I mean, it's for you guys as board members, but it's also for the public, so they understand where we're at. We have nothing to hide. We want to make sure everyone knows where we're at, what we're looking at when we talk to these people about building and stuff like that, when we're looking at enrollment, when we're looking at finances. So State of the District presentation, it'll be something that will be coming up on December 9th. Oh, one other thing, can you toss me that t-shirt? It's right there in the bag. I wanted to let you know that there are some, we have people going back and forth tonight. Maybe some are, haven't been able to be here, but this is a, basically a mental health night that they're having over at the high school. This is one of the t-shirts that I wasn't going to model it, I'll just hold it up if it's a lot better that way. But I guess I, I hope that you realize that our guidance department, they are working hard to make sure that we are making a difference. And, you know, there aren't a lot of classes that you take that talk about what to do with mental health and how to handle those type of things. And we've had mental health, first aid, and, and these people here are helping with trying to create an atmosphere where we can help kids and we can make a difference. So that was the t-shirt. Again, but we have some of those people that are there tonight. Anyone want to add anything to that, you guys that I've left out?
I think I'm excited, they put a lot of work into tonight, so I'm excited about it.
They got some nice press in the paper from them.
Yeah, they did. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to move on to old business. We are a little bit behind in our agenda, but I think that was important information. So glad, glad that we did that. Thank you guys for sharing that. The first item on our old business, 1301, is the land option discussion with possible action. Do you want to kick us off with this a little bit?
That's fine, that's fine. One of the things that I tried to do is when we did the agenda study meeting, I had a chance to talk to Deb and John a little bit. And before I talked to them, I talked to this land option that we're talking about. I don't know what some of the new board members know and don't know about it, so I'm, I'm not trying to leave you out. We have a land option with Gene Upstil for the purchase of, is it 12.4 acres? Gene had come to our last, it was a special meeting, I think, and asked, you know, I think he was looking at some other land deals and maybe checking to see if that would be a possibility of what we might want to look at as far as purchasing. Some of our discussion, just briefly, was the fact of, is this something that we feel that we would like to do? Maybe not only looking at the, you know, the next five, 10 years, but maybe down the road. I think that some of our discussion, as the board members have said, well, we want to be careful that we don't get landlocked. I've heard that, that terminology. And, and again, not just necessarily, you know, looking at next year, but down the road. One of the things, and I'm going to be very honest, and Gene would, you know, say that this is true, I said to him, I said, well, you know, the, one of the things that you talked about was that we could have the option to go ahead and extend that out. I said, I told him that some of the things that I was looking at, a couple of things that I'm looking at right now is I would want to have a purpose for that land. I've talked to Vic, I've talked to John Davis. I mean, they're, they, they know that they can do the things that they're doing with four acres, they can do it with that, that plot out there. So it's not like it isn't, it, it, there's nothing that would happen. I would like us to be able to say though, what we're going to do with it, more than that, more than to, and I'm not saying downgrade anything, but more than to just farm it. Uh, the other thing would be, um, we're looking at our enrollment right now, uh, we were at just about 1%. I, that could be a blip on the screen or can be, you know, something, I, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, and the other thing is, we have a couple people that are new into the, uh, the front row here. And I, I don't know how you feel, I think it's kind of a, a tough situation. Gene works with us and does a very good job. Uh, but I, I, you know, okay, here's your first night on, uh, the board, uh, so to speak. And by the way, we wanna know if you wanna, uh, buy some land?
He asked us to give him an answer by December 1st. But you got an opinion from the counselor that we can't do that?
They, they think that we should have a purpose for that land. And the other part of it is, is, uh, financially, uh, that's not gonna affect us. My recommendation to you would be, and you may say, "Well, you're, you're delaying the inevitable," but my recommendation to you would be, I would, I would prefer that we look at two years and see if we have a blip on the screen or if we, where we're at with it. Number two, the, uh, a couple of people that are occupying these seats right now, give them a chance to catch their breath. I mean, they, they're drinking from a fire hose. Uh, and, and again, uh, we, we have three options. We could say yes and buy that land. Uh, we would have to talk about the, I think Gene's talked about some variations of price. Uh, by the way, it's not like what you, if we were farmers, we'd pay, it's a little, little different. Uh, we could say yes to buying the land, uh, we could say no to buying the land, or we could say, uh, do a two-year extension.
Okay. So, what I, I would like to do is maybe if we could each just take, is Tyler here on the phone still? Is that correct?
Yep, I'm here.
Um, just, just a couple, maybe a couple of minutes each to really sum it up? And if you have any, like, pros and cons that you would like to think was a pro?
Tyler, what?
Yep, so what, what do you think about it? And then we can maybe collectively understand what we wanna do next. So, Tyler, if you don't mind, you can go first. We'll just go right down the line. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Did you hear that?
Yeah, thanks for clarifying, uh, Gene, Deb, uh, I think that's good. My thoughts, as I shared at our last meeting, are this land is something that we should secure, uh, at some point. I think it's a decision that's actually one, at least one beyond the next building, because I think we would all say the next major facility project is likely to be the elementary school, is likely to be on the same site that it currently is. So, this really isn't about the elementary school, this is about what it, what's the school district need long-term beyond that. And from my standpoint, I think that, that is, of course, to secure the land, so, uh, the three options, the one I was on, or it would be a no, and let the, the, uh, option die. Um, so I would be supportive of either purchasing the land, or if an, an extension of the option is truly something that, uh, is workable, then, um, I would certainly support that as well. But I believe we're gonna need the land eventually. I think in the short-term, medium-term, our O.G.A. department could expand that use dramatically and continue with our project-based learning. So, I see that as a use right now. And then, um, certainly, the district will require more land as we grow. Both are, both are my thoughts, Deb.
Okay, I think, I think, uh, we'll just go right down the line.
Yeah, I just have a question, uh, off of that. What is our, um, what's the cost of our option on this every year?
Nothing.
It's $25,000 an acre-ish. But he's gonna, he's gonna hold that for two years and not charge us? I mean, that's-
No, there's no, we don't have to pay anything.
It expires in August right now, but he's saying he doesn't- I mean, we don't have to pay 10 grand a year to have the option or anything.
No, no, no. And then what will happen is-
Price is based off his calculation every, like, two times.
Right. So, what John was saying, it's around the 25-ish, uh, number, and that could, that could vary a little bit.
Yeah, and the current option we have now is expires in August at 2020.
Yeah.
And then what Gene's saying is, hey, I'd extend it a couple of years, which I assume is from now, but.
Okay, so, okay, go ahead, Debbie.
Oh, no, so-
Please, so just to comment real quick, the only risk I see there, Jeff, is that land prices go up, 'cause it is a floating price.
I gotcha, okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
This is a quick one, Al, too.
Yeah.
I know, I know it out there.
I think from my perspective, so, from my perspective, uh, I looked at this and listened to some of the options that we could use, um, in the foreseeable future, the things that we talk about using this land for our agricultural purposes. Um, and, and, and eight years or so after the elementary school, I think in my mind, it's true, that's an opportunity where we really have to understand what's our, our growth at that time. And if our growth isn't such where we have to make adjustments, I'm not so quick to think of fifth building as I am to think of bigger elementary school, or big, like, a reshuffling, you know, that happens. I wouldn't say, though, that, I, I think Tyler's right, if something dramatic were to happen, we had, we would have to be prepared. And being landlocked is a, is a concern. Um, I think the last thing that I would say is if, if I am going to, and as stewards of our district money, if I am going to pay or we are going to pay for agricultural land, I wanna pay agricultural prices. And that is, although I completely appreciate and respect and thank Gene for his kindness in this, because that would be the purpose of the land, I have a hard time, um, with that. So, um, I'm also with Tyler, like, I'm, I would like an opportunity maybe to talk about that with Gene or something. I see what he says and what he thinks, if he understands our usage. Um, I, I would not support right now a buy, but I would support, uh, a two-year option. So, just my thoughts. But, John and-
Um, I, I think we should take advantage of it. My first pick would be, uh, let's do it. Now, we've been dragging this on for five or six years. I think we'll want it eventually down the road. I think, uh, I think a use of that is certainly the project-based learning that's, that's going on with the FFA. I think that would, you know, if we were to ask Danielle, "Hey, if we use it for project-based learning that, that supports, you know, the commercial kitchen and all that goes with that," uh, obviously, that would have to happen before, before I would be in favor of it. But, uh, I think it's, it's gonna be a good idea for us long-term. I understand that we're not probably gonna be in consensus up here on this. And so, when I talked to Lindsay and Deb about it, you know, like, I said that I'm for it and, uh, that, yeah, that everybody might come at this a little bit different, and that's okay. Um, so, so I, I, I just think it's a good opportunity. I think 25,000 is the market value of land. I don't, did we find out what the land was across the way?
It's pretty close.
Okay, okay, so, so-
I'll just, I'll just say that.
So, we have at least one-
But no, that was developed land.
Developed, okay.
And this is not developed land. So, typically, developed land is whatever.
So, wouldn't be exact, so comparable, but it's not clear out in the ballpark at any rate, uh, as far as that goes.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm, I'm just thinking that we're gonna want to have that, uh, and you gotta take it when it's available, not, not when you want it. And so, I think we should take advantage of it for, for really just, just for, uh, future development, and I think it worked good for John Davis and what they're doing in the meantime, and, uh, I'm supportive of it.
Okay, so would you say, I'm just gonna try to tell-
So, I would say yes, we could buy it now. A second would be extended, and it would be no for me.
Um, I guess I agree with, uh, John and Tyler's that, uh, the time to buy the land is when it's available. Um, I would, I would cir, you know, set it up to say, if we're gonna get an opinion from our attorney that says that we can move it into Ag, which I'm all about John Davis doing that, 'cause he's got a great program. He's got as many kids in that as we do band, and look at the band room, and we got as many kids as we do in the football field. And look at the football field. John Davis deserves the same thing that those people do. And, and what else we could do, but, you know, I, I would be, I, I don't care about the price, because I, you know, you're either gonna pay for it, uh, now or later. And so, but I, I would, I would buy it, but I would have an opinion from the attorney that it's gonna work, and if it works, I'm all in.
Okay. So, would you say, same as John? Yes, it would be your first, second?
John and Tyler, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Andrew?
Yeah, I'm all for it as well. Um, again, I, I do envision a campus at some point, I do envision us growing, um, whether, and again, I don't see it in the near future, I see it more down the road. I don't wanna be landlocked. I do, and I think, do I think we're getting it at a discount? No, but we're never gonna get it at a discount. I mean, no matter what we wait and see on, the price is always gonna go up. I mean, I just feel that. Um, again, just to kinda cut to the chase here, and, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think we should pass on it. Um, in order, I would probably say today, and we have the funding, I'd say we go at it today. And secondly, we just do an option on it, so.
I, I guess I'd say one more thing. Tyler, this is Jeff again. Um, I, I would, I would guess that we need some, send somebody to talk to Gene, and I, I think Debbie and, and, um, Lindsay would be a good group, and maybe you can get us a better deal. You know, I've, I've never bought something where I have to tell them what I'm thinking, so, I mean, it's a whole different experience for me.
I think it's on contract, I mean, it's the option, the dollars isn't out there.
Why don't, why don't we just let them guys go at it and, and see what they can do?
Well, and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the options that we have here are yes, extend with options, or no. And I don't know that we really, do we, I, I think because he's asking for that, I, I don't know.
We can, yeah.
I, I don't know, like, I, I'm, I'm asking for some feedback here, I guess, but, go ahead, Tyler.
Yeah, just one thought there, Jeff, I'm, I'm with ya, because when you start talking about 2.5 multiples, but I think this land is, that is in the contract, but the other thing to think about, Jeff, and I guess the rest of the board, is Gene, um, the next 48 acres, all the way down to 180. And so, I would, I would say, Jeff, maybe the conversation is even bigger, broader, about opportunities with that, and not suggesting that we sit here, buy 48 more acres. But to your point about, you know, legacy and, and potentially some negotiation with the board, um, one thought would be that that might be with, with some of the additional lands, even farther south from there, so that's just a thought, Jeff.
Okay. We could get some private funders, you know, something that's, you know, even bigger, I don't know what that might mean.
So, uh, do we make a recommendation and then ask for a second? Or, it looked sounded like it was-
Well, I think we should. Lindsay, do you have anything more you wanna add after you're finished?
No, one of the things, and I heard, uh, the campus there, I would wanna check with, uh, Allers and Cooney, another, not necessarily Danielle, but Connor Wasson. Uh, the question is, uh, and if I'm not phrasing this right, tell me, we wanna know if using that for, uh, Ag, uh, for basically our Ag, uh, education and, uh, project-based learning, if we can do that, if that is sufficient to meet the requirements, uh, of a school purchasing?
Yeah, so I, I think that's all we can do right now.
I think it's just contingent, so I'd make the motion that, that we go ahead and try and exercise the option at a price that Deb and Lindsay will try and negotiate, but up to the contract price. And, and, and it's subject to Allers and Cooney saying, using that in the medium term for the FFA is, you know, meets the legal threshold. Uh, and that would be my first, if that covers it.
I'd second that, that's fine, that'll be okay.
And I have a question before we, before, so, if I understand, this would not happen, we have to then come back and make a decision that-
No, you're gonna buy it.
It's just contingent on that. You'd have to have, so you wouldn't get over the bar, we will or we will not. It won't-
Yeah, right, so you're saying, um, I just wanna be clear, we would, you're saying the emotion to yes, purchase it?
Yes.
Contingent upon a certain price or just any price?
Just the best you can do.
The best-
We already know what we gotta pay for today.
Yeah, okay.
Right?
No worse than that.
And then also dependent upon whether we can use it for Ag land, or, you know, if that means-
That legally is a yes. It has to be legal. It has to be legal. If it's not legal, then we can't do it. If it is legal, then it would be-
And I guess, though, a million other questions, do we have the money to buy it? I'm guessing we do. We would, we wouldn't be having that conversation, right?
She has it up there.
Yeah, and, and it doesn't do anything to our future borrowing.
Okay.
Good, I just saw that on there.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to? I have a motion by John and a second by Jeff. Hold those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Hold those opposed? Me? I guess I'm the lone, uh, center here at that price, but, well, I've never negotiated farmland before.
Well, good luck. How's that president seat looking? We got all the faith in the world in you. I do, yeah.
I think it'll come in at the $1,000 an acre.
Well, I'd love for that, yeah.
Hey, you, Cassie, have been sitting here for a long time. I apologize, but it's the first night, we're getting something, so.
I'm excited.
Okay, so, under this, we have, and Tyler, I'm sorry, do you wanna continue to stay on the phone, Tyler, or, um?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I'm hearing all this clicking, I hope that's not true, it's lying on your end.
No, we, I don't hear any of it on our end, so. You, Cassie, do you think you could come up a little closer? So, uh, item 14, one we have, consider approved proposal for Infinite Campus Student Information System. I think this is what replaces Power School.
Yes, it would, it would replace Power School. Um, I, just being here for the last six months, um, I came from a district that used Infinite Campus, um, and I think after using Power School for about six months now, um, I think that this is the right way to go for our district. Um, the things that we need and the things that we will be using it for, um, are more difficult to find in Power School. Um, Infinite Campus also has, um, options to bring curriculum into it. Uh, the teacher use of it is amazing, um, the communication that they can have with their students even through that. Um, I think one of the biggest things that I saw coming in, doing our online registration, meeting families and staff, is, uh, the biggest complaint we had is all these logins that we have with all of these third-party people that go through Power School, it, it's kinda crazy. Um, we get phone calls and all that stuff, "What's my password?" I'm sure that you guys, having kids in the district, no, exactly. This, basically, we would still go with RevTrack. Um, you link once with RevTrack and Infinite Campus and you're in.
So, it uses like single sign-on?
Yes, absolutely.
Nice, I like that.
I mean, my kids go to a different district, I have put lunch money on their account when they're in lunch line, and it goes directly in.
Oh, cool.
Um, I just, I don't know how to really explain it, but just some of the reports that I'm asked to do, and right now, I'm working on letters to send to this, the parents that haven't paid the registration fees, I'm hand-doing them, where it would take me literally five minutes to print them all. So, this week, that's what I'm doing. It's just, I feel like it's the right way, our district is growing. Um, we are next to Iowa State. I mean, this is just the right way. I know that some of our admins have used it in the past, some have not. Um, I'm excited and I hope that you guys will be excited about it and give us the opportunity to, um, bring us in. And, and this just shows you, like, our food service would be in there, um, our registration has the state reporting, there's, um, parental apps, student apps, um, the reports are amazing, there's help in there. I don't really know if you guys have any questions or not about it. Um, the comparison price is really not as much as you would think it is.
When you add all of those features?
Yeah, you know, and we showed kind of what we pay for Power School compared to Infinite, and realistically, what I have seen, what you knew, that's a pretty good price compared to what we have right now.
Yeah, example of like our lunch system, we, we work with bridges, and that's how it communicates, like, our lunch system communicates with our Power School is with the bridge. We, we struggle with accuracy, and those bridges don't always work. And so, we're struggling with Infinite Campus, for example, it works with those student and attendance. So, there's certain things, like if the student is absent, it's not gonna serve that student, because it's all talks.
So, all these schools here are on it?
Yeah, and that's just a small number. You know, I just kind of tried to pick some of our areas, I know that they are working on a couple more in our area that are going to be joining next year. You know, and I, coming from a district and then having some of the admins, plus we have teachers that are coming from Infinite Campus, and I think that if we do this and our training and implementation and bringing in the correct people, those teachers that have used it before and teaching those teachers to teach the rest, I think that it can be very successful.
Any downsides besides cost?
I mean, there will be pros and cons to everything, but I truly believe the powerful reporting and ad hoc reporting and the saved reports that you can do, it is...
It's pretty easy to say it then.
It's very hard coming from Infinite Campus and then coming in and doing this, and I'm kind of like, okay, that was two clicks there.
It's much more intuitive than how to access your information. Probably, John, the biggest downside is just, we're going to have to like train everybody and train new parents and roll it out, and we've got a plan with a timeline on how to do that. Obviously, the sooner the board, if they made that decision, the sooner that decision's made, hopefully maybe tonight, the quicker than we can work on the implementation of it. You know, Jason and I were here 12 years ago when we were in Mac School and we considered Infinite Campus at that time, and we chose Power School because it was a lot, Power School's a lot cheaper than Infinite Campus at that time, and it's really, the price difference really isn't that big now.
So again, we've had Power School for 12 years, it's lovely, okay, I didn't know how long that had been.
And I've been seeing in some of the things that we're having is the interface is really important because it makes a statement just in and of itself, if you've got a crappy interface and people are like, well, you're really not up to speed on where you need to be, so it's even external, it's, you want your front door to look good.
We use so many third-party vendors that our data is really not as secure as if, within the campus, it's all under one house and it's a little more secure, you know, some school districts have had some issues with data and it was, you know, they attacked through third-party vendors to get access, whereas that'd be less secure.
Who do we have for firewall here?
Jason.
Jason.
Sonic Wall. Who is it?
Sonic Wall and my boss.
Okay. I move approval.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Cassie.
Thank you, guys.
Infinite's got a good staff, they can support us, even though they keep adding people, you've looked at all that, that's the only thing that worries me.
Yes, and we still have the option to go through Grant Wood, AEA as our support, they...
That's up to you guys, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, you know, I don't think it will be a problem at all, I think that we're going to be...
We do have the option.
Yeah, you guys decide, but I mean, just make sure they can support us, we don't want to go do this again.
Even beyond your list, most major districts in the state use it.
It is.
I just wanted to look quick, is anybody...
I'm excited to roll it out to the parents and come together.
Thank you, guys.
Do you need Deb to negotiate that rate?
I feel a little bit more comfortable in this area. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Cassie.
Thank you. Okay, next item, we have...
Got a new job, Deb.
Negotiate.
You do, you do, yeah. Okay, so construction, we have the construction updates, the first...
You guys wait a little there.
Yeah, so this is where we have some, did we ever approve the agenda? There was a few...
We did.
Okay, we did. There's a few changes that we need to make to this agenda, so we have...
Gail can update which change order you're coming off.
Yeah, I can tell you which ones we took off if you'd like, so on your packets there, we will be looking at 2, 7...
We're going to be these ones?
Yeah, these are the ones we will be doing.
Okay.
2, 7, 9, 10, 12, and 14. One is I think already done, right?
One has no action.
It's no action, under $10,000. Okay, so, and can you just really fast for a second, I think for the new board members, can you just, the quick, the difference between a change request and a change order?
I'm going to try my best here. We ask this every board member.
We're going to make that.
It only took about $14 million to pick it up. So, the protocol that happens on our change request, if it's under $10,000, board policy allows Lindsay to sign off on a change request, and a change request is what?
So, a change request, we will prepare a document to send out to all the contractors that would be involved in that change. They then price it, send it back, we put together a summary, which is what Lindsay looks at, if it's large enough, the board looks at it, it's the change request summary, it outlines all the costs for that change.
If it's over $10,000, then it comes to the board.
Then it comes to the board, so when that is signed, that gives the contractor the approval to move forward with that construction. Then the second step, which is really the formal step of updating the contract that the district holds with the contractor, is the change order, which is what we need to take action.
No matter how much...
Generally at the meetings, yeah.
No matter what the dollar amount for a change order, we're changing a contract, so we have to take that.
But, and the thing that I think I stick in my head is, we've really already talked about these changes were necessary.
Yes, so everything that's on, including in a change order, has been approved by the board or by Lindsay at a previous time.
And what we do, just so that you know, it's just that we're, you know, I'm just sitting here saying, well, that looks good, that doesn't look good, what we do is, we do a conference call, and it's usually Art and Adam and Gail and I, and they go down through the information and they talk to us about what this is, why we're doing it, and what it is that it entails, so we have a good understanding, we'd have that right there in front of us, to be an example.
And the change request either happens for a couple of reasons, right? They find something that we missed and we need to make it in order for this to function correctly, or we change the scope of what we want it to do, so the kitchen or something, we add to something, so it's not just from them sometimes.
There's a lot of change orders.
You know, I build a lot of buildings, there's a lot of change orders.
But we did pretty good.
It's not good, though, if you've got good plans, you wouldn't have these change orders, that's why I look at it, just to be honest with you.
Sure, we're still within kind of industry standard, below even industry standard of a project this size and scope and scale, so, but, and we can talk more about that.
Well, that's okay, I'm late to the game, I mean, I just, it's a lot of change orders, I build lots of stuff and I don't know, I don't like change orders.
No, no one likes change orders necessarily.
And I think the skill of our project, I think it entailed a lot of new things, building additions, we had upgrades, we had fixes, repairs, and so as they mentioned, really since the work underground has stopped, the change orders have kind of slowed down as well, so, I appreciate your feedback on that, I kind of tend to feel like we're within that normal range, but, and actually, I've been seeing some credits, some credits.
I'd rather it was kind of...
Move approval for 2, 7, 9, 10, 12, 14 change orders.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, those change orders pass.
Great job.
And then we just have, is this, remind me, I think this is just like an informational, owner, architect, contractor meeting agenda.
Correct, so the meeting minutes for all of the job site meetings that we have, oh, sorry, the owner, contractor meetings are posted.
And can you talk, and maybe you're going to, I don't want to disrupt the flow of the agenda here, but can you talk about that budget summary, is that what she has up here? Because I think that, going to Jeff's question, this is something that we need to make sure, whether you're new or a veteran or whatever, that we know so that we know where we're at because of the contingency, and I don't care who talks about it, I just throw it out.
Current contingency is about $160,000 on the job, so ultimately, from the top down, so each bid package has a line item, if you go to the top, their original contract price and then approved changes to date, and then it works across to what their current contract is as well as what they've been paid to date. Next, contingency, construction manager cost, the next item then is the soft and the owner cost, and then the completed piece of work, really before we even started on any work here, the work at the bottom was completed at the intermediate and elementary schools the previous, so ultimately about 82% overall completion, construction completions about 83%, contingency's at 83%.
Do you have a timeline?
Still in line, yeah, we have our punch list for the last two additions is scheduled for December 17th, 16th, 17th?
17th.
17th, so about a month away. There's still, I'll say exterior items, that will probably be done in the spring, the sidewalks and everything like that will be done yet this fall, but the seeding and planting of plants won't be done until the spring, we're out of that window at this point. I don't know if you want to jump to the narrative, that gives a little more of a progress update for each area. So, high school west, they painted in the shop and VOTAC areas, so they will move into the finished trims for lights, fire alarm devices, that stuff, the kitchen, the demising wall has been erected and the plywood's been installed, on that wall, the FRP panels, which will make up the wall, I'll say that, will start soon if it hasn't already.
I'll have them.
Okay, there you go. High school west classrooms, their mechanical, electrical, plumbing rough ends are very close to being done, actually, metal studs and drywalls, drywall activities are currently happening, the finish of the drywall is what's occurring now, the painter will be in there within a week if he's not in, are already doing block filling. Middle school south is, roofing's on, they'll move into, we have one shaft wall that we have to erect up against the existing building to provide some fire separation, that should start next week, and then they'll move into block fill, the same parade of work that we've gone through at the middle school. Sports complex, they did move 90% of the red brick chips, they should be back to clean the sidewalk in the parking lot. We've done some temporary seeding out there, scoreboard contractor was actually supposed to be in last Monday, but he didn't because of the snow.
And it was like sear...
Yeah, so his plan was to try to get in there this week, with the rain we had last night, he wasn't in there today, he'll come up with his truck to see if he can get an order truck in there or not.
More coming tomorrow, don't we, more rain coming tomorrow.
Tomorrow night, I believe, yes. Let's see, what else is happening down there?
Are they going to play on that field this next year?
I, no.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, is that part of the plan?
Yeah, it's just not going to be ready and we're not going to ruin what we have.
Yeah.
And they did a pretty good job fixing up the...
We even pulled back on a little concrete work still.
Yes, we did, so the main drive that goes back to the sports complex, we delayed until next spring, so we didn't have to pay winter conditions for blanket...
That is no reason to if we're not going to play.
Right, exactly. The score, or the scoreboards, the bleachers did get delivered yesterday, Monday, Monday actually, that's yesterday. Their plan was to start installing them right away, but also with the mud and everything, they unloaded them onto the sidewalk in front of the football entrance, when the conditions are, I'll say firm enough for them to get back there, they'll install them on the pads that are there, so we would create big ruts and a muddy mess if we sent them back there today.
They're not like just sitting out there, like, they're, people can't like play on them.
Well, they're all in crated, I guess they're crated right now and stacked.
You have to acquire them.
Does that mean somebody couldn't go up there and walk all over them? No, it's probably...
Who owns that right now, it's sitting there like that, do you still own it or...
The contractor still owns it, until it has been installed and accepted, so.
Right.
What's up, Dave?
Thank you, thank you.
Now, you guys do very good work.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. We're trying, man, sometimes it's struggle, especially with weather.
I was going to offer a brief update on the discussion we've been having around the remaining dollars, remaining contingency that we anticipate, so just if you want to bear with me for just a couple minutes here, so, we met a handful of weeks ago, we being Lindsay, Gail, Adam, Art and myself, and Jeff, you've met Art.
Yes, sir.
And I don't think we officially met, I'm Sam Steg, I'm a fail architect, so... So, we've been having a discussion revolving around the use of the remaining dollars for contingency and the desire to make sure we spend those dollars for the project, and so we met and discussed a protocol and a prioritization kind of methodology that we want to use going forward, so the first step is to determine how much money we'll have left, and so as Adam is winding down the project in terms of construction, we can see how many dollars are left, and that's the starting point. The first priority, though, is to finish the original project, and we want to make sure that we hold enough for any other potential change orders that might come up, we want to make sure those get checked on the list before we do anything else. The next priority would be review the remaining items that didn't quite make the final cut to get on the bond referendum project that the board determined this was a year and a half ago, so that would be the next level prioritization, and then after that would be additional items that have come up and that have been raised by administrators or whomever, in terms of additional things that might want to get folded into the project, so those would be kind of like the lowest priority, all of that, which of course needs to be vetted by the board in terms of funding and prioritization as well, so that's all kind of we established at that meeting, and Adam is still working on some pricing on some of the potential projects that we could fold into that, and so when the pricing gets more finalized, we'll present in front of the board again and walk through the priorities of those particular projects.
So, are we saying that the bond language is so broad that anything we could come up with essentially you could include it, but it had to be on there when they voted on it, right?
Yeah, that would be my question, is confused on it.
What do you do with the contingency if you don't spend it?
I think that's what, it has to be through the scope of the question on the bond.
Correct.
But it's broad enough, the only thing we need to be careful about is spending it on athletics, they're very, you have to spell that out in the bond question, but it's broad enough, the question's broad enough for anything to do with classrooms or the buildings to, that's pretty broad.
Okay.
So, the only thing we'd have to be concerned about is athletics.
Yeah, so you wouldn't want to say, hey, we're going to put it in a brand-new soccer stadium?
Yeah.
You know.
That's where they're at.
And one of the things that we're doing too is we're working with the people that are to my left, and we're talking about the things and we're trying to prioritize that, so everyone has, you know, I don't know, skin in the game if you want to say, and we're trying to work together so that we have a prioritize and people aren't left out of the...
Are there items that didn't make it, is that what you're explaining?
Yeah, there's a handful of things when we did the master planning and that led into some bond, bond project prioritization, there's a handful of things that didn't quite make the cut, so to speak, and so we'll look at those first, now priorities may have changed, you know, in some sense and other sense.
So you're not married to what's on the list?
Right, right, yeah, I mean, this is a, it's a working list, right, and we want this group and then particularly the board to, of course, reprioritize that if necessary.
If you'd like to see the above the line and below the line, Jeff, we can show you that document, or any board member, just not Jeff.
Right.
Because we talked about that.
Yeah, we'll work through that process in future meetings, we don't want to get too detailed today considering the new members and a lot of the stuff coming as new, so we'll work through that, so that's kind of a current status report on the contingency knowledge.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that was it, now are we on to 14.03?
Yes, I'm going to just take a quick comment if that's all right, and then I'm going to turn it over to Vic. 14.03, we're looking at a first reading, so we want to bring that to your attention. This is in the news, this is things that are happening, and we're trying to make sure that we have a policy that handles those type of things. Vic, do you want to discuss anything there that is, the changes are highlighted?
Well, I've had a further discussion of legal counsel and just listening to other area of school districts, what they're kind of doing with their drug and drinking and smoking policies, most districts have used words like look-alike or e-cigarette or tobacco-like product, and their legal counsel and other people are represented, you know, many districts are saying, we need to be more specific and say vaping, you know, instead of saying look-alike, let's be very specific. We've been using the word look-alike because it is a look-alike substance, but with the, you know, with the health issues related to vaping and the concerns we have across the nation, I think we need to be very specific on what we're doing, and when we're applying, you know, policy, we want to name up what it is, so we would be following what ISB would recommend and what legal counsel has recommended for us, we would suggest that we add this to district policy, which we follow in our handbooks, which we follow in our athletic handbooks, so be consistent all based off of what district policy is, so we basically have added the word vaping or vapor products or vaping products in several different areas in our current policy without having to change the territory of the policy.
So what would happen is, you're having this as a first reading in front of you now, we're not asking for any type of motion, we're saying, here's what we recommend, we're going to come back on December 9th and ask you for a second reading, unless you tell me, or tell us, I should say, that we need to change it, then you can go ahead and approve it or, and skip the third reading. Recommend, I mean, do you have any, I guess you have any recommendations for us?
No, I liked, very much.
I like, and I like when we call it out specifically, just so we all are clear about it, so...
You'll change it next year when they do the next thing.
Yeah, that's...
You know, I mean, that's what you're up against.
That's the thing, it's constantly moving targets, so just stay with it.
Well, with the next thing.
Okay, so that was just the first reading, thank you very much for that. Next item on the agenda, 1404, consider approved, oh, I'm sorry, resolution appointing paying agent, want registered and transfer agent, so, thank you.
That was John?
Yeah.
And then, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it has to be a real call though, and so, Tyler?
Aye.
Jeff?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Andrew?
Aye.
Okay, so that is approved, thank you, sorry about that. Next item, 1405, consider approved the tax exemption certificate for refunding bonds, series 2019, is there a motion?
I'm making a motion, a second.
All those, is this, and all those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that passes. 1406, consider approved resolution authorizing the terms of issuance and providing for and securing the payment of school infrastructure sales, services and use tax revenue refunding bonds, series 2019. of school infrastructure sales, services, and use tax revenue refunding bonds, series two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved. Um, and then we were, now, Gail and I talked about this, this is the point of the meeting where we usually do our summary of financial reports. Um, and I don't want to steal their thunder, but usually, we'll go into this in a little bit more depth, because this is a longer meeting, and because we're gonna do the state of the district in December, um, we're probably gonna trim this up a little bit. If that, unless people have questions, we'll certainly talk about it. Yeah, oh, okay, but anyway, so, there, there will be a short watch today.
Yeah, so, basically, uh, I, uh, nothing unusual or anything. Um, the only thing I wanted to point out is, uh, the AEA support was recorded last month, and we're still seeing that. That's our only red area on the summary. So, um, that will level out, um, as we move forward, and then, um, yeah, I just, I can't, I can't talk.
Can you do two different things at once? Sorry, I know what it is on.
Have trouble, love, when I exit, I exit out of the whole thing. Okay, there we go. So, that, what I was just talking about is this red area right here, and that is just reflection of state aid, and it was recorded all in one month, so that, as we go forward, that will level out. That's the only red area, and it's not really a concern, it's just, uh, a booking at, at a certain time. So, um, this, uh, okay, I'm moving forward. Um, any questions about the, uh, PEPAL expenses? Um, the, we have a few expenses in that area, but not much, and, um, our cash on hand is very good. Uh, like, you know, that's not unusual for us. Our published budget, um, Jeff, I think we talked about this, the bottom portion of this is the April fifteenth budget that the board approves and sets on April fifteenth, includes all funds. So, we should be at thirty-three point three, three percent of the budget, and, so, overall, we're at thirty-one point three, three, four. So, we are within our means, and a majority of that is the construction. So, we're actually below that, because of the construction work. So, and then, here's our PEPAL expenditures, and where we're at to date. Um, we have cleaned up some of these expenditures that have, show a negative balance on the activity fund. Our activity fund is basically all the extra, the, um, social groups, the athletic groups, and the athletic boosters, clubs. What we do is, uh, we get reimbursed as the boosters approve things. And so, basically, if the boosters do not pick up that ten thousand dollars showing as a, a negative overspent, the athletics picks it up. So, at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year, all these accounts have to be zeroed out, and, um, whatever the athletic boosters do not reimburse, the athletics picks up. Everything else has to be zeroed out by the end of the fiscal year. And then, um, of course, the food service, um, it's, we're moving forward, things, she's trying different things, and so, um, our participation is still low. But, we are, you know, our sales, you know, um, we actually had more sales, more revenue than compared a year ago. And if you, she's selling a lot of à la carte, so, she's trying different things and doing different things, so, um, I think it is just gonna take some time to turn that curve.
I applaud the effort.
They do too.
Is that going down every year?
What's that?
Is it steadily been going down every year for?
The participation, yeah.
Yeah, participation, sorry.
You know, it's really frustrating because our enrollment increases.
Participation, you know, it's just.
Yeah.
It can be a whole.
We can't make kids eat.
And I don't think it's so much that the participation, it's so much that the participation goes down that we just don't estimate correctly. Like, if we.
Well, actually, what I, why we concentrate on participation so much is because all kids, if we, if kids eat, we get federal and state reimbursement.
Oh, gotcha.
And that offsets our costs, and we don't get that unless kids eat.
Got it, understood.
And how do they track that?
We submit a report every month, basically.
And you track it as a thing by punches, or?
The point of service.
Point of service, okay.
Yeah, and it has to be a reimbursable meal. It has to have all components, then it qualifies, otherwise, it's à la carte. If somebody just comes through and just wants, you know, like for breakfast, a muffin and a juice, well, it doesn't have all the components, so you're, they're gonna pay for the à la carte. So, we don't get to count that as a reimbursable meal where federal and state credits.
Got it.
But the cost is pretty well passed through, the cost of the à la carte items.
Yes.
Is the à la carte items sometimes more than the whole meal item?
Oh, yeah, so, if you think about it, like, say, they can buy water, so, a bottle of water, we have students spending maybe six, six dollars at a time, where a meal is two dollars and eighty-five cents.
And they can get a water.
Yeah, they can get a water, they can get.
And we get reimbursed.
No, we don't.
Oh, you know whose kids do that?
Yes, so, the reimbursement is, they have to have all the components.
That's what I mean, why don't we just make them, yeah, just make them take the whole deal? Then you can get, and even if they don't eat it, we get all our money back.
It's a good idea.
That's my first time playing again.
Okay.
I think we should have Wendy's hamburger.
Any other questions?
Steph's never seen such a screwed up thing in my life. Sorry, Tyler.
Okay, so, uh, is that pretty good there, Gail?
Yeah.
Any other questions that you guys have? Like you said, she'll be going through this in much more detail, I promise she'll be here, etc. For the state of the district, I have offered to stay behind us at the State of the District. Whatever those.
Um, the consent agenda, fifteen, one, two, three, and four, or, one, two, and three, and four, or, one, two, and three are basically what we had last year. So, that is why we put it on the consent.
Yeah, that is a good point. I first, I will stop, the one before that was public forum, and we don't have anybody here again. So, to Gail's point, we move on to the consent agenda, and as you guys have heard, these are for items where, um, they are kind of a, a, kind of a, pretty much a dumb deal for the most part, um, they're FYI, and so, we don't usually talk about each item individually on the agenda. But, of course, any board member is more than, uh, more than, uh.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you, to, to, uh, hey, I'm not done saying. So, before we do that, I'm gonna finish my sentence. We've all been here for very long, but I'll finish this.
I doubt it.
Okay, so, the consent agenda, you can pull that out, and we can talk about it if you like, but otherwise, we will not discuss individual things.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll just keep talking about this for a little while.
I think I just gotta, um, collectively affect it.
I think you do. I think you guys should not sit together, I, I promise you that, I mean, we'll separate these two. Okay, is there a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Yeah, he did.
I didn't ask anybody if we're gonna say, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is. Do you want to sit in this chair? Just kidding, thank you very much. Okay, so, the last thing we have on this is the calendar. It looks like, obviously, tomorrow and Thursday, we have the ISB convention. Um, it looks like December second, the closing date column, the two thousand thirteen state revenue bonds. Is that something where we have to come in for that?
Nope, you took care of everything tonight. So, now, what my responsibility is delivering it to the attorneys tomorrow, and then they have to have it to, for sale on December second. With the Thanksgiving holiday, we're on a really tight timeline.
Got it, so that will just be done.
Yep, tonight's, tonight's the end of it all.
Okay, um, December ninth is the next, December ninth is the next regular board meeting, that will be the state of the district. So, expect that to be, um, not maybe this long, but again, a little bit longer, board meeting. And January thirteenth is the next board meeting. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Ah, sorry, I forgot.
I was in books.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, the, on the ninth is what, the district?
Oh, now you want to ask.
I've got it written down, try to state.
Oh, yeah.
The ninth is just.
This one, the ninth is the next regular board meeting, that's just called district, state of the district.
The ninth is the regular board meeting?
Yes.
Uh, January thirteenth would be on schedule.
Second, we're back, we're back on schedule, second Monday.
Yeah, yeah, this was just a.
Because of the, yeah.
Yeah, um, just want to let you know, you're having a schedule. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, we're still.
You want to shut that, so we shut that now?
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Tyler.
Appreciate that.